I'd like to call this meeting for Monday, January ninth, twenty twenty-three to order. Ms. Hardy, you'll be the prayer and Mr. Shad.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. Thank you for the beautiful weather and the season that we are in. We ask that you dwell in this meeting today. May your peace flow and for all of us to continue to work together as a city to grow and build this great city that we live in. For all these blessings, we ask in your name, Jesus.
Amen.
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Ellender?
Mr. Nazad?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Abchar?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Any motion in a second for the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, I need a motion in a second to postpone item number fifteen to February thirteenth meeting. Have a motion in a second to remove, well, I'm sorry, to postpone item number fifteen to February thirteenth.
Two seconds.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Um, Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
So, I mean, can we do all three at one time? Six, nine, and?
Five, six, seven.
Six, five, six, and nine. I'd like to make a motion for the move those from the agenda. Do I need to read them? Okay, number five is public hearing on ordinance granting a request from D F Development LLC, twenty-two oh two Augusta Street to remove the stipulation that only allows one mobile home on the property so to up to eight multifamily units. So that up to eight multifamily units can be built, ordinance oh two twenty-three. Number six, public hearing on ordinance granting a rezone to C S G Enterprises LLC, eleven oh one Gulf Lane. Residential to mixed residential to allow for three additional mobile homes, ordinance oh three twenty-three. And number nine is a public hearing on ordinance amending ordinance, number four thirty-five M C series master sales and U S tax ordinance, amending definitions, ordinance oh six twenty-three. Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes, do we have to have the tablet say something about that?
All right, now I need an a motion in a second for the approval of the agenda as amended.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Item number one is a presentation of audit for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, in resolution accepting the same. Mayor Danahay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yes, we have with us tonight, uh, Mr. Stephen Derwin. Uh, he's, uh, done our audit in the past few years and, uh, I think that he will, uh, give us a full presentation of what we stand today.
Well, thank y'all. Um, I'm Stephen Derwin, managing partner for Derwin and Associates. We completed the annual financial statement audit for the city and also, um, we gave a, we gave a report on the city's compliance with laws and regulations that are required by the state of Louisiana. And also, the state legislature, uh, required this year, they reinstated the agreed-upon procedures process that was placed, in place about five years ago and, uh, halted because of COVID. Now it's reinstated, so basically I have three reports to go over and I'll, uh, go over that and touch on some of the financial highlights for the city to the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. And tell you that the actual audit for the financial statements, we didn't have any issues, but I will actually go over the opinion. If you turn to the, um, first, it's page three, which is, uh, the page after the list of mayor and the council numbers. That's our independent audit reports, uh, three or four pages long, but the, uh, section that, uh, we need to focus on would be the fourth paragraph toward the bottom of page three, uh, where it says unmodified opinion on governmental activities. So, and, uh, this is our report on the financial statements for the city. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above, which are listed in the first paragraph, in all material respects, uh, present fairly the financial position of activities that the city has offered as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. So that's what, uh, we refer to as an unmodified opinion. So there's no exceptions to the primary government, government financial statements that are presented in this report. So that's a, a positive thing. Um, the next several pages are kind of like the financial highlights of the, uh, financial statements of the city and those are actually prepared by the administration, the mayor and, uh, Jennifer staff. So I'm not going to go over that. It's just required to be presented in this package. So I'm going to touch on some of the financial statements and, uh, what happened during the fiscal year. So the first financial statement we'll go over is page fifteen. And it's the statement of net position as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, which reflects the assets and liability, liabilities and net position of the city. I'll just go over some of the totals and some of the main items that changed last year. As you can see, the total assets for all activities to the far right at the end of the year were a hundred and sixty seven, uh, seven million, five hundred thousand. And, uh, that is, uh, decreased about two million from the prior year of two thousand twenty-one. Now, the assets are consisted of about forty-seven million in cash for checking accounts and investments. That's down about six million from the prior year. Also about a hundred and ten billion in capital assets, which include land and infrastructure, streets and water and sewer systems, equipment and buildings. And that total increased about four billion from the prior year. The city added about fifteen and a half to sixteen million dollars worth of improvements for water and sewer plant, various street improvements and various, uh, items of equipment and some building improvements. So the next section, uh, reflects the liabilities or debt of the city. And at the end of the year, it was about seventy-four point eight billion dollars. And that's down about thirty-two point eight billion from the prior year. Um, those liabilities consist of normal operating accounts payable, about eight million dollars, uh, about eighteen million dollars in unfunded pension liabilities for the four pension plans the city participates in. And that's determined by actuary by the state of Louisiana. And that decreased about sixteen million in the prior year. Thirty-four million in accrued liability for the health benefits for retirees of the city. Uh, that decreased about ten million from the prior year. About twelve point six million dollars in, uh, the two bond issues the city has. And that decreased, uh, one point four billion from the prior year. So that's the, um, balance sheet of the city as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. On the next page, on page sixteen, uh, reflects the revenues and expenses of the city. It's a summarized version. Also just touch on some of the highlights. Uh, the revenues of the city for the, uh, for the year, including, you know, the water and sewer system, all the governmental activities, sales taxes, property taxes, what have you, were fifty point five million dollars. That was down about fifteen billion from the prior year. Because if you remember, twenty twenty-one, the city recognized, I think about seventeen million in female reimbursements for the hurricane, uh, breed pickup. Um, and the expenses, uh, for the city were down about eight million from twenty twenty-one. And again, primarily, that was mostly because of hurricane-type expenses that were incurred in twenty twenty-one, but didn't have as much in twenty twenty-two. The general, uh, revenues of the city are made up of sales taxes of about twenty-three million, property taxes of about three point one million, franchise, excuse me, franchise taxes of one point five million. And you also received or recognized seven point four, four million in federal grant revenues from the American Rescue Plan that the city recognized in twenty twenty-two. So you had a net change in position, a positive amount of seven million, one forty-two for two thousand twenty-two. Any questions on the financial statements? Okay, so the other reports were required by the state and federal government present, uh, start on page seventy-four toward the end of the report. There's two reports. We have to prepare or test in compliance of your internal accounting controls and your compliance with certain laws and regulations of the state and local government. And that's on page seventy-four and seventy-five. And also, uh, we also have to report on your compliance with your federal grants that you've just paid in and, um, the controls over those grants. And that's on page seventy-six and seventy-seven. And the results of those testing on page seventy-eight. I'll let you turn to that. So there it summarizes the results of our very odd reports that we had to prepare. And if you saw any box checked yes, that would be a finding. So as you can see, all the areas over internal controls or financial reporting, there was no material weaknesses identified, no significant deficiencies identified, and no non-compliance that were material to the financial statements that are presented. And under the federal awards, basically the same thing. No issues that were required to be reported on. And you can, it also names the, uh, federal grant that y'all received last year from the U S Department of Treasury, which flowed through the state of Louisiana Department of Revenue. Okay, on page, um, so that's the financial statement audit, so to speak. And the other process that we, the city had to enter in agreement with us to prepare, this is what I refer to as statewide agreed-upon procedures. So the state legislature passed a rein implement and stated that law that requires all, every government in all sixty-four parishes to do this report, which focuses on areas of control, um, and compliance and ethics and, uh, and the policies of the city. And we also had to test the outcome of those policies. And there's about thirty, some, almost forty steps that we had to, I'm not going to go over everyone. But I can, I can say, uh, we can turn to the last page and it'll summarize of the three areas that we did have to disclose. And basically, uh, we recommended the city update their sexual harassment policy and their written policies to include that they have to prepare an annual report. Not just for sexual harassment. The city does prepare annual report and has for a couple of years. It's just not even in their policy, so we're recommending it be written. So there's no, uh, miscommunication there. And the other two items, um, not really that significant, but we're recommending that this, the, the city post on its website, uh, the fraud notice, which identifies a telephone number for anyone to report any fraud or misappropriation that they see, uh, which would go to the state legislative auditor if that happened. Now, you have the policies in place, uh, for that, but you didn't have on your website. Same thing for the sexual harassment policy and complaint procedures. We're recommending that they put that on your website. So that's pretty much it. Uh, all the other areas, we didn't have any significant issues, so we weren't required to specifically report anything. Any questions from the council or the mayor?
I'd like to have a comment. Um, I'd like to thank Mr. Derwin. He's, um, been very thorough in his approach and we're very pleased with the outcome. Uh, thanks to Ms. Lauren and her staff. They've done a wonderful job through the year of, um, you know, maintaining our finances as they should be. So a little, I think, Mr. Derwin probably, but every year seems like there's a little more compliance that takes place. It comes out of the legislature. And so we're always kind of trying to keep up with that. And sometimes he keeps us informed of what's taking place in those areas. And so, uh, uh, thank you very much for a good job.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion in a second to accept?
Second. Roll call, please. Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number two is an extension for temporary housing and recreational vehicles due to damage caused by Hurricane Laura for the following addresses. Living in an RV after a year and a half. Item A, to extend temporary housing in a recreational vehicle located at twenty-five eighty-nine Augustine Street in accordance with ordinance number one six nine three.
So move.
Is there anyone here that wants to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
The next set are living in an RV after two years. Item B, to extend temporary housing in a recreational vehicle located at one oh three three West Ferdin Street in accordance with ordinance one six nine three M C series. Is anyone here to speak on this item?
Yeah, is anyone here? I'm just, I went by there and, um, I mean, the house doesn't look like it's in livable shape, but I don't know any.
There have been no permits applied for.
So they haven't tried to do anything yet.
They haven't come in and spoken for.
Nothing, no.
And they got a letter and a sign posted in New York?
And no response. Well, there was someone there, because when I went by, there was someone there. So, okay.
Do we have a motion in a second, Derwin?
Okay, okay. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Nazad?
No.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
It is my district.
Since they haven't, and they haven't reached out to us.
I need to.
They haven't come to any of the meetings.
But. Is there well mischeck performed in, for them, maybe? I mean, I, do they understand?
The letter specifically states you have to be here.
And they've received certified, they received them? Did we send them certified?
No, 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 sorry.
So we, if they've sent them certified, you don't know if there's an attempted delivery. I mean, they were, it, just my opinion, and I understand, because if you come by my office right now, you're going to say they haven't done anything, which is not the case. And we have the documentation to show you all the things that we're still going through, but, but we are coming to an end and, and we need to have something definitive from people. And, um, you know, we're not going to blink and we're going to be in office three years. So I'm concerned. I think it's getting time where we're going to have to get real definitive unless, you know, they could prove that they have steps going forward. We just can't keep going on. Because three years is going to go to three and a half and then to four.
So can we send something sort of?
It needs to be certified. That way you know that it's, it's been delivered, an attempted delivery. Drew, I don't need to be stepping on you.
Well, I think it's.
So this is for six months, so I won't send you a certified letter for six months.
I think it's applicable at this point.
We, is that what we, we feel we just need to do with the, the remaining, just?
Well, I can give you an answer on that. I have an answer for that.
Right.
So, I mean, I know that, but I don't know.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we should just make it a common practice from this point on. Send certified mail.
I mean, you've done everything you could do.
We can do that, but like you said, if you, if you, if you choose to do that tonight, it's going to be six months before you send the results of that, the certified mail.
One thing that ordinance enforcement started doing to, um, save money was they get the, um, the marshal's office to start delivering the letters instead of sending, spending all the money on certified. That might be an option as well.
I just, we just need to know that there was point of delivery. I mean, mail service is good, but.
Actually, we do both. In, in a lot of cases, we do, we always do regular mail now, because Kate advised that we do that, because it will come back with a sticker on it sometimes. You know, we love to board the drugs, whatever.
Right.
Um, and we've been certified as well, but we, the marshal just defends.
The letter hasn't come back.
Though it hasn't.
The yes on that.
Ms. Ellender?
Item C, to extend temporary housing in a recreational vehicle located at one one six Gordon Street in accordance with ordinance number one six nine three M C series. Is anyone here to speak on this item? And my understanding is there's no permits pulled and no work completed.
Is this, um, that old roof house that you did a pull? There's a, there's a RV in the front in the driveway and there's one in the back. Which one are we living in? They're both of them. They're both hooked up? And the house, is there, um, I mean, house?
The side one was. I walked back and looked at the, the one on the side to the rear. That one is connected, the front one is.
The one in the driveway is not.
Yeah.
And the house looks like it's about, it looks good, like it's been.
It's got a new roof and it has new windows.
That was my concern, because I believe last time this one came up, we were under the impression it was almost done, because house looks.
But there just hasn't been any more progress, is my understanding, or pass there. Because it looks the same to me, but it, it doesn't look bad. It looks like there's progress, but it, it, you know, I don't know what's going on the inside.
I think that's correct. We don't know what's going on.
Right. That's why they should.
Without them coming, they tell us, we don't know.
Roll call. I need a motion in a second, I'm sorry.
So, um, second. Ms. Abchar? I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
No.
Mr. Nazad?
No.
Item D is to extend, extend temporary housing in a recreational vehicle located at one four oh eight Forest Lane in accordance with ordinance number one six nine three M C series.
Uh, that, uh, is the family in my district and they have an arbitration that is scheduled for January seventeenth, which will next Tuesday. So they should be coming to hopefully some sort of understanding and be able to complete the project.
So. So nothing's, nothing's been done, done on it?
They haven't been able to because of the legal status. Yeah.
All right. Are they here tonight?
Is anyone here to speak on this item?
No, they're not, they were not able to come tonight. Uh, this is within, over the weekend, I mean.
They came to the zoning meeting.
They came to the zoning meeting.
We're not going to say.
So it's just, yeah.
Do we have a motion in a second?
And, and let me say this too. As soon, they feel like this arbitration, or something's going to be decided upon for the, um, and they're ready to go forward with the completion of, uh, their renovations.
He said he had contractors lined up.
They're lined up, he told me that again.
Motion in a second?
Some who?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Item number three, roll show calls for the condition of the following addresses. Item A, to condemn building or structure located at one one zero five Lori Lane in accordance. Ms. Ellender?
Mr. Vincent is here. Mr. Vincent, I went by yesterday and that front door was wide open in that building. I have good trouble. I don't know what to tell you, but I don't see any, I mean, I don't know if you met with your contractor, is it a potential person that you had?
Well, I had a, uh, secure, uh, solicited a contractor to do the work and I was waiting to get a price. We pretty much agreed to do it. And he texted me today and told me he couldn't do it. Uh, all I can do is try to get another contractor. Someone had to have broken in, because the building is locked up tight.
I, I'm, I'll show you, I took a picture of it so you could see.
Man, I'm sorry?
I said, I took a picture of it so you could see. I didn't get out and then later on I noticed it was closed again. So they're, they're going in, they're doing, which I understand you, you're not there, but.
I don't see how they're getting in. I mean, they're just, unless they're breaking in the front door. You know, I mean, what's secure, you know?
I understand.
Uh, all I can do is try to solicit another contractor to close up the north side of the building.
They, um, the building is basically, I think you did some work on the windows.
Yes, we had the front door replaced and the front windows replaced.
And I think you did something on that front door, although, you know, as I've just told you, it's still not secure. But, I mean, it's coming to the point where it's going to have to be action taken. You, you're going to have to produce that you have something going on. You should at least close it in, be it with, whether you do it with, um, plywood or metal to go back, um, but it, but it needs to be enclosed. And I'm, I'm running out of time with which to be able to.
I mean, I would.
I mean, I know.
If it's enclosed, is it secure even, you know? I mean, it's just really in a bad part of town and.
I agree.
These people are breaking in and.
I agree, I understand.
I, I, I don't like it, I hate it, you know? It's my building and I've spent a lot of time and energy building it, you know, buying it, purchasing it.
Right.
Twenty-five thousand dollars in property taxes since I've owned it and I, I hate those people. I don't know why they keep doing it. There's nothing in there to take, you know?
I, I noticed yesterday there was like a, a sofa flipped upside on his, on his back, because it's flipped upside down in the front, when I was going by.
In the front?
In, in that front room, it's that rear front door, that rear front door.
Mm-hmm. Right, that's, that's the way they went in there and destroyed my building, you know? Done some cleanup in the back, because I'm trying to get that cleaned up again. There's trash that people are dumping on my property. You know, this is, I, I, I don't know how to control it, you know? Because I have to go to work every day and.
I, I would think they're, um, I didn't notice that, you know, you put a guard on your locks to keep somebody from jimming up, I know there's actually shield. You don't have anything like there on it, so I suppose that they're getting in there and they're jimming it open.
Could very well be. I mean, I mean, it's just, I've never had this much trouble. I've ne, I've never had break-ins up until after the hurricane. And I, I just don't get it, you know? Are they breaking in everywhere else, you know? I mean.
I don't know. I can just tell you the activity I've seen and or saw or witnessed after the storm. Uh, I don't know what all you had in there. But I thought eventually at some point, they're going to get everything out of it, that they're.
I took it all, every bit of it.
Because I, I would see just wagon loads.
Everything I worked for.
Behind the back.
Sixty years, I took it all.
Being pulled out.
You know? I'm, I'm sorry that the, the contractor bailed on me. It just, I get the text this morning.
Tonight for the roll show cause, and please correct me if I'm wrong, this is like a thirty-day extension that the city will get. But if an act of doubt, it'll, the city's going to take definitive action. Am I correct on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So if you could come up with something in the thirty days, then that's, that's the length of time that I have.
All right. Thank you.
And, and that's dependent upon how the council votes.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
And so that's dependent upon too, as to how the council votes.
Okay.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? With a motion in a second or? Has stipulations or just?
Yeah, rule to show cause is thirty days.
Condemn that thirty days to the law.
If he gets his contractor, comes in and sees us.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
If you get your, get a contractor, go in, and then you could go in and visit, and apartmenting, and then that would put a stay on that rule, so-
I thought I had a contractor.
I know, I know you did.
I mean, I want to fix more than you did, you know, the more the council does.
Do you have a motion in a second?
Some move, second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item B, to condemn building or structure located at six oh one Cass Street.
So moved. Second.
Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes. Item C to condemn building or structure located at nine oh five West Burton Street. Ms. Ellender?
So moved.
Second.
Is there anyone here to speak on this item?
I have a question. Is it, is it those two mobile homes on there?
No, ma'am, just the one in the front.
Okay, alright, because I noticed that the windows are all broken out and everything on that one.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Item D, to condemn building or structure located at one oh two Four Lock Street. Ms. Ellender?
So moved.
Second.
Is there anyone here to speak on this item?
So, I have a question on this one too.
Yes, ma'am.
The one that's right in, to the south of that one? Have you started in the front?
Yes.
Okay, alright. I just-
We're just not ready for that one, yeah.
Okay.
That one.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Item four, public hearing on ordinance zoning property to business for Johnny Morgan Senior at two oh five Matthews Street with an exception to allow for a mobile home. Ms. Hardy?
Um, is Mr. Morgan present? Johnny Morgan? So, the history behind this property is it was never zoned.
Correct.
It was just omitted. And so, he's requesting business, he, he never contacted me, so I'm just-
So, you see on that original plot, it was dedicated for, uh, extension of Thomas Street, but that never happened, so we're gonna have to, you know, zone it.
And so, tell me again what the yellow code is?
Residential. Residential.
Residential, and the blue is business?
Yes.
I think, um, certainly we need to address the aesthetics of that area. Um, I, it's, it's kinda unclear to me exactly where he wants this mobile home. Um, I, I drove out there a couple of times, and, uh, I saw a travel trailer, I think some storage sheds.
So, if you've seen the, uh, the polls for what looks to be an army?
Yes.
I believe the trailer will be somewhere next to that.
And cat a corner to that, there's a trailer at the corner of, uh, Thomas and Matthews. Would that be cat a corner to where he wants his trailer?
Yes.
So, there's a, there is a, a mobile home trailer at the corner of Thomas and Matthews, at that intersection, across, so across is-
Yes.
Is that that location where he wants his?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I guess I'm trying to understand the rationale of why business?
Um-
Because he chooses business over residential across the street, is that?
Well, the rest of his property is own business, the location, um-
Show me the rest of his property again, please.
All the blue, two oh five.
But that's across the street.
No, to the north.
Okay, I see, yeah. However, where he wants the mobile home, I mean, he, he wants it for the intentions to live there. And his business is across the street, which is business, no? See where the arrow is pointing?
I see where the arrow is.
That's where he wants the mobile home. We're gonna, we're gonna color that blue.
Okay.
Because it's never been zoned, and that's why he's gonna put the mobile home.
And he's gonna live there, or is it-
He's gonna, he's just- Yeah.
No, this is for moving.
So, why not request it residential or mixed? What is the surrounding area?
The rest of his property is own business?
His property, but the, the other-
The yellow to the south is residential?
Yeah. So, where he's going to live should be residential. For mixed.
You can't put a mobile home in residential.
I'm sorry, mixed. And obviously, the other mobile homes there are grandfathered in. But where he wants to reside should not be business. I, I understand his businesses are established in that zoned area. So, I'm the, I would recommend mixed zoning, opposed to business.
What is his business?
I don't remember, he has a business.
It's, no, it's not a business.
He's been there since before we had comprehensive zoning, so he's been, um, living as an obsession in this area.
So, what are all those little buildings that are, they're pretty new looking?
There's one, yes, that's correct. Because he actually ran plumbing and everything to it. He, uh, he came to the council with a zoning for an exception to, um, have an accessory building without primary, and I don't believe it's that.
You have a question, you wanna go through the mic?
I got a question.
While he's getting up there, we had the discussion how to zone it, and we felt more comfortable with business because the mixed residential was spot zoning, and we know how y'all feel about spot zoning, so we just continued his business district.
Because you can-
With the exception.
For the mobile home?
For the mobile.
Anything that y'all can do to clean it up, you know, that's, that's where people come into our city. And I've been talking about this place for two or three years. I called on the sewer line the other day, and they went on and ran the sewer line, and I don't know if they got a permit or what, but Mike said they shut them down. But they weren't gonna run the sewer line. Now the sewer line's there, those buildings are full of junk, they got people sleeping in there at night, you know, that's entrance to our city, especially when the interstate gets shut down. You know, everybody in the world comes through there, you know, you spend money down the road, you guys wanted to brick the sod on my building, you know, on the same road right there, you know? And, and you let that kinda trash, I mean, it's trashy. I mean, I don't care if he's here or he's not here.
Or whatever.
It's trashy, and it needs to be cleaned up. I mean, it's right there by, people spend a lot of money on a donut shop, you know? Like we needed another donut shop. Damn thing looks pretty good, you know, but I mean, that place right there is trash, and it's not gonna get cleaned up unless somebody takes a, a firm footage and cleans it up.
So, is there possibly maybe not, I mean, do we have to make a decision, like give him the-
You, you can do it without the exception. If, if that's what you want, that zoning for the future?
Yeah.
How do you know what he's using all these buildings to watch?
I mean, put another building in, somebody sleeping in the building, I don't, I don't mean that ugly.
They sure all permit it too.
He did say too, that, um, accessory structures were coming down.
Okay.
When?
I thought I heard something about that.
When he gets his primary structure there.
I mean, you could always put stipulations, like, you know, should not be used as dwellings, et cetera. It's just hard to police those.
Yeah.
Also, something I want to mention while I'm thinking of it, some things, so did he get permits for, to, for those buildings? Do you have to get permits to put those accessory structures? So, things like the mobile homes not having skirting, because he's supposed to have skirting on it. How, how does he get a permit if he's not in compliance? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Is there a way that we can? Even before he, we allow him to do anything else?
He's kinda held up at the moment, because we won't give him permits. So, that's-
Typically, we don't give permits if you're not, or if you have open cases, uh, with ordinance, that kind of thing.
A lot of cities in Texas, I know in Texas, I don't, I hadn't checked around here yet, but I was gonna do that, got tied up to something else, but, uh, they require the people that sell these buildings to get permits. You know, and if they don't, they shut their business down. But they are moving those things all over, Pocahontas, there's people living in them, all over. And if you can't, if we don't have people that can see that, you know, when they drive around, and we need to watch where we walk, because we're gonna get run over. I'm telling you, they're, they're, they're all over, and I've got two of them in my backyard, people been living in for a long time. There was no permit purchase to put the things there, you know? I talked to Denise about it a couple of years ago, you know, and we talked, we talked about these things time and time again. Nothing's happened over there, nothing. Cass Street's gonna be Cass Street from now on. You know, when people come in, they say they're gonna beautify the city, they're gonna clean things up. Go look at Cass Street.
Do you know where he currently domiciled?
Do not.
Look on his application.
It's a field box, I love it.
Oh.
Field box.
Could be in any of those, I think.
He has this address look like Matthews Street though.
That's what we're both know. So, he wants to domicile there, but yet, his request is to zone it business, yet he wants to domicile there, and the city is saying, is the city recommending zoning this business?
Yeah, he didn't request that. We recommended the business.
If you're told to change.
Yeah, you can change it.
If we change it to mixed residential, he doesn't have to get any permit to put something else on that come over.
Correct. And y'all can't put stipulations, or can't make an agreement?
But what it is zoned right now as-
Well, is, if it's-
It's not zoned.
It's residential to the south of it, you need to go residential.
You have to allocate something to zoning that's never been allocated to a classification before.
So, we make that as a motion?
Just a given residential.
Yeah.
I suppose to the south of it. Although it mixed, you know, so- Then you will-
Another issue into the whole mix.
So, y'all wanna amend the ordinance to change it from business to residential?
But you can't have mobile homes in residential, so I think we need a variance to, yeah, well-
Who lives in that, that mobile home on the front?
You, you have to apply to VZA for that.
It should behoove him to clean that area up too.
Yeah, it needs to be cleaned up.
You, you come to, you know, I, I went to Cass Street yesterday, Bill.
I went today.
It's scary.
Yes.
But, but this is the deal. You know, people are coming to the city, and they're not willing, and ordinances are great, everybody loves them till they have to apply to the old street, and I got that, I understand that. But we gotta get it cleaned up, and it was a gloomy day, so if it looked bad, it looked really bad on a gloomy day, and not just there, different areas of the city, and so I'm just like, he hasn't put a good foot for us already, so I, I don't know, he's-
So, y'all want to-
And he shouldn't came tonight.
Move to amend the ordinance to residential, so someone will move this to second that. And then if y'all adopt that, then you adopt the ordinance as amended, which will classify the zoning, and he'll then have to go to the VZA for a variance on the mobile homes.
And if they say yes, they don't come here.
Right.
Right. Right, Austin? Or they'll have to apply for a variance to, yeah.
Or, or a rezoning.
Yes.
However, if stipulations could be added to that.
Or you could just table the whole thing for a month and tell him it needs to be here.
He needs, he really needs to come here.
I like that, let's do that.
He really needs to be-
So moved.
Second.
First phone, second.
Yes. Did he attend the land use, he say?
He had two items on those.
It's, you know, and, and so that's, that's a concern too, that it's not zoned, and, you know, what's in the best interest of the city is towards the zoning aspect. That appears to be residential.
And I believe that's his intended purpose.
Yes.
Either way, y'all could just do it, and he has to go get some variance, or y'all can put it off and have him come back.
We'll put it off, give him an opportunity to come out to counsel and present his rationale. Did we get a second?
Roll call, please. Ms. Abchar?
To table, is this-
To ta- no, to table, yes.
Postphone, so next one.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Item five and six were removed. Item seven, public hearing on ordinance granting a rezon to Kermit Reshore for three oh four and three oh six East Burton Street. From mixed residential to business to allow for an electrical business. Ms. Ellender?
Alright, so moved. Second.
Is there anyone here to speak on this item?
Where is Kermit? Mr. and Mrs. Reshore are here. Good evening. You wanna come to the podium? Only if you have to.
I think, if I have to, yeah, bro. It, it should be a walk.
Ms. Ellender, does he have to?
I just wanna know, are you gonna clean up that site real good?
We are cleaning.
Thank you.
We, we had nearby there.
Yes, ma'am. We are.
I talked to, um, how did already-
Do we need to speak on behalf of her?
So, did I make the motion?
Yes, I second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes. Item number eight is public hearing on ordinance authorizing Mayor Danahay, Mayor Mike Danahay to execute right-of-way servitude with housing authority of the city of Salford, Louisiana for sanitary sewer lift station project, lift station replacement project. Mayor Danahay?
Yeah, uh, I prefer to, uh, Mr. Danahay. Uh, so this is just a right, a right wing agreement allowing us to, uh, to construct a new lift station and just abandon it currently and replace it with this.
So moved.
Second.
Anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Item nine was removed. Item ten, public hearing on ordinance authorizing Mayor Mike Danahay to sign cooperative endeavor agreement with Calipari's police jury for Sarah Street Bridge replacement. Mayor Danahay?
So moved.
Second.
This, this, uh, bridge actually, uh, is the, the city boundary between the state and the city, and, uh, so we're splitting cost on the bridge, so.
Is anyone wish to speak on this item? Motion, do we have a mo- you had a motion in a second? Roll call, please.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yeah.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Item eleven, introduction of ordinance authorizing Mayor Mike Danahay to sign cooperative endeavor agreement with the state of Louisiana to bore one hundred and twenty feet of twelve-inch water main under main drainage lateral at Louis Alama Road. Mayor Danahay?
So moved. Second.
Is anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Item twelve, introduction of ordinance declaring certain surplus movable property of the city of Salford and providing for the disposal thereof. This is IT and fire equipment.
So moved. Second.
Anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Ellender? Mr. Nazad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes. Item thirteen is a resolution accepting substantial completion for memorial heights.
Thirteen.
This is two, two thirteen.
Is it fifteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, the opponent's over thirteen.
I'm in.
Well, just thirteen, sorry.
How about that? How about this?
Uh, the resolution accepting substantial completion for Mimosa Heights Phase Two Street improvements, Mayor Danahay? Motion in second, does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellander?
Yes.
Item fourteen is a resolution authorizing Mayor Danahay to sign any and all environmental review documents for the Salf- Salford Housing Authority. The review is effective until twenty twenty eight, Mayor Danahay?
So moved. Second.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Ellander?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes. Item fifteen was postponed February thirteenth council meeting. Item sixteen is a resolution approving liquor licenses for twenty twenty three, this is an annual item, and it states all are in compliance, Mayor Danahay?
So moved. Second.
Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellander?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Item seventeen is the public comment section. Does anyone wish to speak, I think no one's trying to mean for us, we're just checking. Alright, um, this ends the public comment section of the meeting. Does anyone have anything they wanna add?
I have something.
No.
I wanna thank Shelley and Denise in that department, because they'll contribute what people think, last night, late at night, I got a call of someone trying to move a building in. With no permits, no nothing, and I got, with Denise, last night, texted her, because I have her on my phone, and. Um, this morning, I got an email from her saying we took care of the matter. So, they are working, it's just sometimes it has to be complaint driven, because some of them are coming in the middle of the night and trying to sneak them in, and they know what they're doing, so, thank you.
And, and, uh, there was a, a similar situation I ran into a few months back, where we got a phone call about some offloading that was going on in a neighborhood of a metal building to be constructed. Um, I went, I called, uh, Denise as well as, uh, Jerry Jones, our inspector, uh, chief inspector, and both showed up at the site. Uh, like we said, they were offloading, they were gonna just construct it the next day, a lot of times, these people come in and they're, the way they do it is they do it in one day. Before we can even know about it, it's up, they don't pull a permit, they should, but they don't, um, and sometimes it gets put up. Now, the only way to handle that, of course, would be for us to hold the homeowner responsible for it, they'd have to remove it. Um, and, you know, sometimes that doesn't work quite well, but also, you know, when they spend thousands of dollars and things like that, but. They also have to understand that there is a procedure here, that they must pull the permits, these contractors do not do it, they come from out town, out of town and start throwing these things up. Uh, and we do occasionally, we're able to stop that, that, that project in, in that situation we get. Um, and so, uh, and they weren't compliant, they weren't compliant, they pulled a slab, the slab was not, didn't meet setbacks and the whole nine yards, so. Uh, you know, we were able to stop it, but I mean, sometimes it just happens in the middle of the day, I mean, they show up in the morning, it's done, by that afternoon, they're gone. But we try to, we try to do it, Shelley and her, uh, her staff do a very good job of policing it, so, um, we, we're trying our best all the time.
I, I just have two quick things, of course, it's the meeting that Chief Wall is not at, but today's National Lawn Enforcement Day, so, uh, you know, thank an officer if you see him, uh.
He's at chief conference, first.
I don't know who else. Well, on National Lawn Enforcement Day, that's awesome. Uh, and January is National Mentor Month, I want my big brothers and big sisters first to, uh, to raise awareness for that, so if anybody's interested in being a mentor, please reach out. That's all I have.
The next, uh, regular city council meeting will be held Monday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty three, five thirty, same location.
Do you have something, Mr.?
Yeah, I appreciate it, we're out there every day, we're trying.
We know, it's a lot, it's a lot today.
Sometimes you just catch all the flack, but, you know, we can't be everywhere in the city, everywhere, but we, we call you, y'all, we respond, I appreciate that.
Y'all do.